Thank you for your time. I appreciate everything and what you do.
Thank you, Mr. James. Appreciate it. All right, that takes us to the public participation portion of tonight's meeting. And I'm going to go ahead and read the, uh, the public, the public statement here. It says, "All regular meetings of the board are open to the public because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. It shall schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board shall set an unlimited time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. However, the time for each speaker shall be limited to three minutes and each individual will only be recognized once. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topic related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly." "The board president shall be responsible for recognizing all speakers who shall properly identify themselves, for maintaining proper order, and for adherence to any time limit set. And any questions requiring further investigation will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response." And I believe that's all of that. I'm going to go ahead and call you up two at a time. I believe the timer is now working. You will get a yellow, let's see if it's... What have I not done? Oh, there we go. Okay. All right, give me just one more minute here. Hey, okay, that's the beep you'll hear. All right, so you'll get a yellow, um, a yellow light on the, on the clock when there's, I believe, 30 seconds we set it for Laurlee, and then there'll be a red light when it's time to wrap up, and I will give you the, the all finished. But Laurlee, I need you to come here and help me set it back to three minutes, please, because I cleared it. Oh, is it this one? There we go. Okay. Yep, yep, yep. All right, okay. All right, first up, I'll call you two by two. So first up, we have John Kaufman and then Dee Dee, Dee Dee Vassino.
Good evening. My name is John Kaufman. I live in Loveland on the address that was given there. And I wanted to emphasize just first to give you a context for my comments. I've been an educator for the last 25 years, just recently retired. I was a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and a superintendent over the last 25 years. And so I'm a very proud and happy resident here in Loveland. Consistency is often considered a virtue. However, in the case of the Thompson School Board, their consistent disregard for the community is unacceptable. One example has been the elimination of the Indian mascots from LHS and Bill Reed Middle School. Despite strong support for the Indian mascot in the community, this board chose to change the mascots even though they were not being forced to do so at the time. It is possible that the state would have forced the change anyway, actually, they did. But this board was already determined to change the mascots contrary to what many people in the community wanted. Another example was when this board's president, Ms. Lori Avista Ward, on behalf of this entire board, contacted the Larimer County Commissioners to request that Larimer County require masks in schools. Knowing that mask mandates were unpopular with many parents, she wanted to hide the board decision behind a county mandate. After the county refused to issue the mask mandate, she then led the board to issue their own mask mandate. Consistent with radical progressivism, the board sought its own agenda against the wishes of so many in the community. Finally, the board is deceitfully implementing Critical Race Theory, or CRT, within the district. Your deceptive approach began by retaining the services of an outside group, the Western Education Equity Assistance Center, or WEAC, which provided a plan for installing CRT under the radar. This plan was to be implemented within this board's new equity policy. Given pushback from teachers and staff, WEAC recommended that, quote, "outside consultants," unquote, conduct training rather than TSD administrators. In response, the board hired Gary Howard, author of Growing Good White Folks, actually it was keynote speeches, to train the district on what he calls "deep equity," which uses the principles of CRT. In November, I urged this community to vote for Blake Law, Lisa Winborn, Dee Dee Vassino, and Nancy Rumfelt to reinstall trust, transport, transparency, and regard for the desires of the TSD community.
Thank you. And we have Dee Dee Vassino up next.
Thank you, President Ward, and thank you for having me. Members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, guests, my name is Dee Dee Vassino. I am running for School Board Director in District B. And you have my address, so I don't need to state that here. First, I would like to congratulate Ms. Doran on fulfilling the open seat so that we have seven people to make decisions. I think that's awesome. I would also like to congratulate, I'm going to move this keyboard in so I can get closer here. I also would like to congratulate, sorry, lost my place, President Ward, on your recent appointment to the Loveland City Council's Trust Committee. The 2021, 2020, 2021 school year has been hard. It's been hard on teachers. It's been hard on students. It was, it was a horrible year for us all. And our students suffered academically, as you all know, in ways that we can't even imagine, and emotionally. We have a lot of work to do to get our kids back up to snuff and right the losses that they had in academic achievement last year. Which brings me to my point. We need people to be all in, in order to get our kids back on track academically. So I am curious as to why the school board president would apply to the Trust Committee, Trust Commission, while at the same time overseeing a district where our kids are not doing so great in reading and math. We have 53% of our kids who cannot read at grade level. 64% of our kids do not meet grade level expectations in math. And Ms. Ward, you are our leader. You are leading this effort to raise our kids up and get us back on track. And now facing, splitting your time between two different places. So that is something that I do not understand. Our children are struggling to get back on track. Now, we can debate the reliability of CMAS scores another time, but that's all the data we have. That's what we have to go on. That's what we have to move forward with. So, parents, community members, I promise you that if I'm appointed to the board, I will focus every ounce of my energy on raising academic excellence and standards in our district. I will give our students my very full attention. I will give our teachers my full support. I will not divide my time with political stepping stones. I will focus only on the kids. So, Ms. Ward, if you care about these kids, and I know you do, I know you do, I would urge you, please, to pick a side, either all in at Thompson School District or all in with the city council. Just, just one, because we need you. We need leadership. And we need guidance. So that is what I would urge you to do. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Shayna Garcia and then Tom Cagiano.
Hello. My name is Shayna Garcia, and I live in Loveland. And I'm speaking tonight simply to thank this school board for their service to the student, staff, and community of the Thompson School District. I had the good fortune to work with several of these members over the years and genuinely admire their selfless dedication to all our students. Joining a school board is a hefty responsibility. The success or failure of a board lies in its ability to work together in an altruistic fashion to support the well-being of staff and students, to confirm taxpayers' dollars are being spent responsibly, and to ensure all students are educated to the best of their ability. Our best board members have shared that they felt most successful when hearing from students and staff of positive school experiences. I would also like to thank the board for allowing me the chance to speak at tonight's meeting. Community members, please be reminded that audience participation is not legally or constitutionally required, nor is it your God-given right. It is generously allowed by this board only via board policy and past practice, which could be changed at any time. So please think about that before signing up to speak. Thank you.
Uh, Tom Cagiano and then Tim Duff, Tim Duffy.
So I came here tonight to support the board on masks, but it seems that fury has calmed down a little bit. And I would congratulate you and applaud you for your handling of that whole thing. Last, last time I was here, I missed this last meeting, but, you know, people were incredibly rude and uncivil and just, it was almost embarrassing to be human at this meeting. So I just wanted to say, good job.
Uh, I have Tim Duffy and then Nancy Rumfelt. To speak, you can, you can take your mask off to speak if you want.
All right, my name is Tim Duffy. My name is on the sheet you all have. I want to start, I got a few different topics here. The first thing is if, um, you could look at the mold in the milk at Lucille Irwin. It's been like five days. My daughter sends me Snapchats of her mold in her milk. So if you could please look into that, I would appreciate it. The other thing, a survey went out to my children from Loveland High School, and this is a Thompson survey, and I had to opt them out of it, not opt them into it. So I'm just going to read some of these questions. What is your gender identity? Some people describe themselves as transgender when their sex at birth does not match what they feel. Are you transgender? What's your following describes you? What's the highest level of schooling your mother completed? The reason I'm reading all these is I have no idea why the school needs to ask these questions to my children. During the past 12 months, did you make a plan about how you could attempt suicide during the past 12 months? How many times did you actually attempt suicide? During the past seven days, how many times were you inside while someone was smoking? During the past seven days, how many times did you ride in a car while someone was smoking? Have you ever had sexual intercourse? How old were you when you had sexual intercourse? During the past three months, how many people did you have sexual intercourse with? Did you drink alcohol or use drugs while having sexual intercourse? The last time you had intercourse, did you and your partner use a condom? The last time you had sexual intercourse with an opposite sex partner, what one method do you use to prevent pregnancy? During COVID-19, did your parents lose their jobs? So the reason I read these is it's none of your damn business, okay? I raise my kids, you educate them, okay? There is a line that is being crossed. And to have to opt them out and sign a letter so their teacher wouldn't force them to take this survey is ridiculous. It should be the other way. If you want your kid to participate in a survey, you should have to sign the voucher so they can take it. When I asked to get this survey, they gave me a piece of paper that said, "Contact the administrator who administers this for the school." It was blank. So I had to go up to the school and ask, "Who's this person?" They didn't know. So I finally got ahold of Carrie Littner, the vice principal, who is the administrator for Loveland, and she sent me this copy. The last thing I want to say is, they do your COVID briefing at the end of this meeting, and I stay till the end. And I'm sick and tired of you, Dawn, making jokes about how us as the general public do not understand COVID, okay? We all understand. And I just want you to know, I'm tired of it.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Your time is up. Nancy Rumfelt and then Heather Van Bentham.
Hi, Nancy Rumfelt, Loveland. It's on the thing. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My mom raised me to always see the good in a person regardless of who they were. I raised my kids to understand that life is not fair. I don't even have to finish that sentence now, they just fill it in. Life is about how you deal with what comes your way and the choices that you make. When my daughters Emily and Miranda went to Winona, the focus there was on character, not on differences, not on what divides us, but on what unites us. Fast forward to today, and now there is more division than ever. Am I to believe that teachers here in Thompson need deep equity training because they lack the skills to assess the different learning needs of the kids in their class? What really impacts a child's ability to learn? Is it skin color? Of course not, as that is demeaning and racist. Is it the size of their parents' bank accounts? Of course not, as this is an insult to all who have and are growing up poor and are successful. Is it gender identity or sexual orientation? Of course not, as it has nothing to do with their intelligence. Kids to learn well need the support of their family, whatever shape or form that family is. Kids to learn well need a classroom that is staffed with a highly qualified teacher who is passionate about helping their kids learn, and I know that Thompson has many great teachers. Kids to learn well need boundaries, expectations, and accountability, none of which has anything to do with race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or income. Why are you spending thousands of dollars on retraining teachers and students to see the world through a racial lens? Through a lens that labels people on things that they cannot change, such as skin color? Why are you allowing reverse racism and discrimination to be taught as okay? Why not focus on character traits such as treating each other with kindness, with respect, with understanding? Why not focus on unity? Why not spend the $156,000 from the S R 3 on adding in and on to more robust tutoring programs? Why not spend the money on more paraprofessionals in the classroom to help the teachers meet the needs of their students? This Friday, there is no school so staff can attend an education camp focused on what? Deep equity? I am asking as a taxpayer and a concerned citizen that I be allowed to attend this Friday, the education camp at a school to quietly and respectfully observe, listen, and learn. Never forget that what makes America great is the beauty and unity of being a melting pot, which is only possible when we focus on what unites us as a nation and as a community. Thank you.
Heather Van Bentham and then Andy Crisman.
Good evening, Heather Van Bentham, Berthoud. I just read a quote, "Unity comes from mutual recognition of virtue." We are not unified right now. I find no virtue in manipulation. I have issues with portions of the COVID data presentation from the last meeting. Positive case counts were shown on a slide as three bullets for three periods of time, but they were unequal timeframes. There were two roughly one-week time periods and one three-week period. Nine cases, 17 to 22 August, 139 cases, 23 to 31 August, or 130 more cases in Week Two than in Week One, 173 cases, 1 through 21 September, or 34 more cases in Weeks Three through Five combined than in Week Two. This looks to me like a spike and then a tapering off. Makes sense. Seems like that's what happens at the beginning of every school year when we all get sick until our immune systems catch up. Uh, your bar charts did display daily counts, but there was a note at the bottom that read, "Overall upward trend." Your chart contradicted that statement. It showed a spike and then a trailing off. I feel manipulated. The Winter 2021 American Medical Association COVID-19 Guide on Vaccines, Vaccine Trials, Combating Misinformation contains a language swaps section where they advise doctors on things not to say and substitutes for things to say instead. The swaps range from fine to downright egregious, the worst being, "Don't say hospitalization rates, instead say deaths." This is a lie. I feel manipulated. I previously brought up the ICU beds story Mr. Gonzalez told at the September 1st meeting because, as Larimer County Public Health Director right now, the biggest part of his job is COVID-19. He was only at the meeting to discuss COVID-19. He spun an incomplete story about full ICU beds, leading us by the hand right up to the end before stepping back to allow us to complete the story on our own, hoping we would assume all the ICU beds were full of COVID-19 patients without his actually saying so. Fox 31 reported 29 September, quote, "Larimer County health officials said 47% of patients in critical care have COVID-19," unquote. I'm not diminishing the seriousness of this illness or the tragedy of sickness and death. I'm saying I feel manipulated when I'm given incomplete or misleading information. Clean data and a strong truthful message stand on their own. Playing with data and words and showing incomplete pictures indicate a weak message, one that requires manipulation to achieve compliant behavior. When it's our experts and authorities doing the manipulation, I no longer find any virtue in those voices and do not trust what they say, especially since they are mandating what we must do with our own bodies. This matters. Please, no vaccine mandates. Leave it up to the parents.
Andy Crisman and then Steve Grabner.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. My name is Andy Crisman, 2986 Vicourt in Loveland. I am a music teacher, parent of two eighth graders at Bill Reed Middle School, and president of the Thompson Education Association. I want to speak to some of your agenda items for tonight. I'm intrigued by the possibilities the Master Planning Committee identified as possible uses for the Mary Blair site in their report. Dr. Sheer, the former superintendent, and I talked about a lower-cost daycare center for employees as an employee benefit and as a way to recruit and retain employees way back in 2014. And we later talked about possibly housing one at Stansberry if it were to close. Daycare is expensive and hard to find. It was the right decision to expand preschool access at Stansberry. Students first. But opening one at Mary Blair is an intriguing option. I also resonate with developing space for community partners and for departments that are short on space. This would be a way to develop a closer relationship with Kids Pack, the Clothing Closet, and other programs that nearly exclusively benefit our district community. I like the ideas here and encourage the board to engage parents, educators, and community members in discussion about what might best fit the needs of the district community. I'm encouraged by the most recent COVID numbers in the presentation tonight. One data point, right? But I'm especially encouraged that the student positivity rate is dropping as the adult positivity rate is increasing. That implies to me that we could be doing a better job of keeping students safe and learning in person relative to the general population. While we can still improve our communication of positive cases to students and staff, this data is very promising. The recommendation of the joint insurance community to retain the insurance dividend against future premium increases is well reasoned. But it does break with the past practice of refunding the dividend to all employees. I understand that we are looking at a potentially significant premium rate increase next year, and it makes sense to apply this million or so dollars against that increase. I do ask the board and the district to be very clear and transparent next spring in budgeting to show exactly how this dividend is applied to offset next year's premium increase. Finally, I want to mention the high level of parent engagement and participation I've seen recently on district committees. In the past week or so, I've participated in the K8 Philosophy Task Force with seven parents and three students in, on the committee. The Calendar Committee with robust parent and community representation. The DAC Committee, where the parents did a great job of pushing the district's thinking on the district unified improvement planning. I also understand there's a large parent and community presence of the design groups for High Plains and Conrad Ball. Thank you for providing so many opportunities for parents and students to provide input into the operation of the Thompson School District.
Thank you. Steve Grabner and Julie Norton.
Good evening. I'm Steve Grabner, and I've been a teacher at Berthoud. This is my third year. And I just wanted to express a word of thanks because of my own personal experience at Berthoud. I'm old enough to have been around the bar and more than once. And having taught here in this district for the last three years, I just want to say that this experience of partnership that I've experienced in my job with everybody has been astonishing. You know, partnership with my peers, partnership with the administration at the school, partnership with the folks here downtown, and partnership, most importantly, with, with the kids and with the parents when we interact. You know, we live in difficult times, and there's a diversity of opinions and a diversity of experiences. But my experience there is when we sit down and talk about how to help a kid, how to inspire these kids, you know, and how to, to help them shape their vision and give them the support that we need, you know, it's that partnership that makes that all possible. And that's a very precious thing. And I think everybody has worked together to, to create that here in this district. So, well done, everybody. Because as I've came here, I just thought I would never, as a professional educator, experienced something at this level before. I mean, I'd never had before. And I'm so happy here at the, at this stage in my career to have experienced that. And I don't know if there's something mystical about that or not, but I think it all comes down, you know, to the, what, what people do on an everyday basis to help each other. And I think, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to the entire district for making that possible and making my job a joy because, a great deal because of what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Julie Norton.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, I just want to thank you for the mask mandate. I, you know, it's, we're doing it. I'm in the schools. I, I teach, and I have two elementary school students. And, and we're, we're doing fine. You know, I know, I know it's hard. It's not what we're used to as teachers or students, but, but it's going well. I've also talked to many community members over the past few weeks who seem very appreciative, people who don't have kids in stu, in school. And they just appreciate that you all took that step when the health department would not do it. So I appreciate you stepping in where, where they did not. So, um, so that's one thing. Also, I just wanted to talk about, um, mental health a little bit with students. I really appreciate how much our district has done between increasing our counselors, our social, emotional learning coordinators, like we heard the principal from Loveland High saying, incorporating community time. We do that at my school also. Um, the importance of recess at the elementary level, we really appreciate that. We know how much that supports children's overall well-being and their academic success. And Bloomsite surveys that my school participates in and some others, I believe, do as well. The EnFocus curriculum that we have, Peacekeeper Circle trainings. So our district is doing so much for the mental health of our students. And as times change and lives get busy and parents are busy and, and our world becomes more challenging, this is really important. So I just want to thank you for keeping that at the forefront as we work with our students. Um, one need I am seeing, I taught fifth grade, and my partners and I really noticed social media, even
the school board and saying thank you. I appreciate that they've been handling the meetings as they have. I would go in person, however, the time that I went was unruly and unfortunate for folks to be interrupting and behaving as if the students aren't watching. So I very much appreciate that people are calling and supporting the school board and also challenging ways that we can do better. There are some concerning things right now, and I hope that the focus remains on keeping schools open for our students, and that we focus on maintaining leadership in the school board that hears the families and supports keeping schools open for students to be safe. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Lou Rogers, Loveland, Colorado. My email is rogersm212@gmail.com. Another dark day in public education in America, as Texas faces another shooting in a school. It burdens my heart to hear such tragedy for students and staff, parents in that community, but it also makes me very proud of our community, our staff who works tirelessly to keep everyone safe, our school board who, despite hot political issues, stay on course. Today, you have an agenda with closing schools, reutilizing schools, resignations of staff, hearing the Mill and Bond Committee report in how we are improving educational opportunities for kids through our Mill and Bond, from the Career Center that you just opened to opening another K8 school. So to all of you in the TSD community, thank you to the school board for your tireless hours, thank you to administration for great leadership in keeping our kids safe, and to all the personnel in our schools, teachers, administrators, custodians, nutritional services, for caring and loving our kids and helping them grow into the adults and citizens they need to be. Thank you.
Bonnie McDermid, 7121 Spring Glade Road, Loveland, 9706671870. I just want to let the school board and district know that you are doing a great job in your efforts to keep our students safe. It is extremely sad that a few parents and out-of-town activists in a district as big as Thompson are screaming out so many conspiracy theories about masks, curriculum, and COVID. Their threats and behaviors are unacceptable to me, and I am sure to you and many others. Please provide more police protection to our board, and also remove those immediately who cannot sit down, behave, and speak professionally. Rambling and screaming dangerous threats is unacceptable. If they were students in a classroom, wouldn't they be removed immediately? Please take all precautions necessary to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, that brings us to the end of public comments for tonight.